Good evening and welcome to Bexhill-Ensey Town Council Full Council Meeting tonight, Wednesday the 24th of September. Can I remind everybody, as usual, mobile phones either off or on airplay mode due to interference? Thank you very much. So we've got members of the public here tonight, so I'll move swiftly into public participation, item one. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak for three minutes? Thank you. If you'd like to move to the microphone, please introduce yourself and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name's Paul Ralssford, a member of residents in Bexhill. I refer to the tender document regarding the A259 surplike roundabout design project. I see that the final selection for this takes place this month, September. I don't know whether it's passed, accepted or whatever. Please, can the council make it decision officially known? I've had a one eighteenth scale model made of the design that Lenny myself had done, submitted and have brought it with me if anyone wants to view it after the meeting or now, regardless. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents wish to speak? No? Okay. As usual, answers to questions will be in the minutes. Item two, do we have any apologies for absence tonight?
We do. Councillor Byrne, Councillor Jason and Councillor Tendrick are at another meeting because Councillor Ruston is having problems with childcare.
Thank you. Item number three, to receive declarations of pecuniary and non pecuniary interest. Do we have any of those, Councillor Winter?
Member of Rotherd District Council Chair.
Thank you. Item four. Oh, yeah, sorry, I've nearly forgot. Thank you, deputy. I'd like a proposer and a seconder to accept those apologies, please. Any proposer? Thank you. Seconder? All those in favour, please show. Thank you. declarations of interest chairs announcement. I have one announcement for, and I look right at the camera, members of the public, residents here tonight and councillors. On Saturday, we have a meeting planned by the officers of Bexhill Town Council on devolution and local government review. The starting time is ten o'clock, and a lot of work put into it. It goes on from ten till one. There is a running order being prepared, it's nearly finished. I would really welcome everybody there. This is something, it's been a lot of hard work in setting up and I think we should take this opportunity. There will be opportunities for questions and answers from people that will be there that will have some of the answers, not all of them, because not all of them are known, but it will paint a picture for how our town will be shaped in the future. So, this is our opportunity. We believe it's the right time, some disagree but we believe it is. Most of the councils will have made their decision over what their preference is and then we will split it between local government review and devolution. So, please, please, if you have time, please come along. Day or a billion, doors open from nine thirty starting at ten. Hopefully I've sold that and when people see the videos on Friday, it might encourage even more people to come along. It's in the main auditorium. Thank you. Moving on to the minutes, item five, to approve the minutes, appendix A and B of the full council meeting and the EGM that was called in August. So I'd like to do them as one. So a proposer and a seconder, please, for those minutes, as for any issues. Councillor Huntley proposing, seconding, Councillor L. All those in favour accepting those minutes, please show. Thank you. Any against? Thank you. Now there's a little bit of whiteness while I use my pen. All right, thank you. Is that done? Back in again. So, item six is the mayor's office to receive an update on the town mayor, which is the deputy mayor, and the chair report. And for the benefit of those watching, I shall read out my report, it has been distributed to councillors earlier on today. I didn't write a report for August despite having an EGM, as it's not a month that we would usually have a meeting, so the details go all the way back to the end of July. It's not until I revisit my diary to detail the report, it becomes more obvious to me how many voluntary groups are in our town. It's great to go and see and talk to them and understand what help they require. Attendance by me and our deputy is always greatly appreciated by these groups and I will continue to go to as many as I do. This period included the VJ celebrations, Bexhill Day and the Battle of Britain memorial service, they were all very well attended. My thanks go to the officers during this period for the work that they put into making these happen. It was a little strange that I attended three cricket clubs during this time, Sibley, Bexhill and Little Common, all doing great things in our community, not forgetting the pleasure of opening and closing Bexhill Open Bowls tournament. I had to think what Bob T was then. Due to having a couple of weeks off, I had to decline a few out of town events, but I will be going to more of these in the next few months to spread the word of what's going on in our great town. Much of the rest of my spare time seems to be around collaborating with organisations within the town, including the neighbourhood board. As we move into the two worlds of local government review and devolution, which we should attempt to try and separate these, I suspect my diary may become even busier. My final thought is connected to the length of our meetings. As there is so much coming our way and the workload for our officers is ever increasing, please can I ask that we all, and that for sure includes me, are succinct when presenting the full council meetings? We know we have, and that's not me stopping anybody talking, but our last two meetings have gone on for two and a half hours and we didn't get everything done in July and there'll be more stuff coming our way. We know we have a maximum time for our meetings and often, as I said, we don't get all of the business done on our agendas. And beneath that is a list of the events that I attended. So that is the chairs. So, report from councillors comes next. We have privilege again to have a provisional county councillor with us, Councillor Ian Hollage. You can come up to the microphone. The floor is yours.
Thank you Chair and good evening councillors. I just want to say thank you to Councillor Crotty, many years ago for being on the front page of the Bexhill Observer for laying in Buckhurst Road, and I apologise the fact that it is still a bit bumpy. But on Monday the 20th of October, to Wednesday the 22nd of October, there will be new channel drains being put in. We've been unable, I think, to find out exactly where the source of the water is, it's still coming up water even when it's not raining. We've done lots of investigatory trenches along there, still can't find the source of water or what's causing that to heave. And we're putting in new drainage channels, there will be no parking cones put out, weather reliant, and I haven't got children that go to school, so I don't know when half term is, or hopefully they've coordinated it for that week. But that's just to let you know that we have not taken the eye off Buckhurst Road and it is getting the attention that we can get it. The other thing that you may have noticed is that you can't get in or out of Bexhill at the moment because the Coombe Valley Way had yet another oil spill. Streetworks, highways, roadworks, potholes are a constant nightmare and hold us up and hold everybody else up. National highways successfully took down the two foot bridges along King Offa Way, the dual carriageway, and on the weekend of the Friday the 28th of November to the first of the month after that, whenever it is, three days over that weekend, they will be replacing those bridges, subject to everything else that's out of our control. But that will be the next diversion. Preceding the removal of the bridges, I drove with highways around all the different diversions route and pleased to say, over the weekend of the Wild West, it was not wild Bexhill, it worked very well over that weekend. Queensway, Gateway, streetworks, lane rental. It's a massive problem and we know it is, there will be scrutiny over it after it's been completed. We have got a scrutiny committee on streetworks because roadworks are popping up everywhere, some stay too long, some don't, some work well, others don't, but we're looking into how we can refine streetworks and make life easier for everybody. There is a lane rental scheme that we've put in place, it's not happening quick enough in our opinion, but this has got to go through a procedure, but there's streetworks investigation that we're doing over scrutiny and there's lane rental scheme that is being in place, but that will hopefully reduce in long time the amount of streetworks. That's it. Any questions about anything?
I have an observation if I may. I don't actually mind roadworks because the shoves things have been done. The one in city that the road closure for two nights, they only took one night by replacing some ravines on the side of the road. Don't forget. Councillor.
Queensway, is there any date again for when it might be completed?
Be on my pay grade, I wouldn't ever, ever say anything. Forget it.
Any other questions, Councillor Hollage?
Yep. I was going to say basically, was the oil leak, was what happened today?
Yes.
The tracks?
There was an oil leak previously last week. Put in electric cars, everybody drive electric cars, no oil, but that's another story.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Thomas?
When is Queensway, the streets on either side, when is that going to be completed?
I don't know the exact location that you're talking about, I'm sorry. The trees are, it's not in my division, so I don't know the answer to that question. If you want the answer, email it, I'll forward it on and get an answer for you.
Okay. Now other hands going up, so thank you, Councillor Hollage. To receive reports from Ward District Council Hall, we don't have one here tonight. Thank you. Seven C to receive ward reports from town councillors. Can we have a ward report? I'll go to Councillor Crotty first and go with this one.
Thank you Chair. Some bad news at the moment. Flawless popular hairdressers in Parkus Road, they're having to close down due to the fact of de-parking. They're finding it increasingly hard to find parking spaces, even if they do park in the Wainwright Road area, they are scared because they go through two alleyways that are dark and there's been a few alcoholics that have come up to them, so they decide to relocate elsewhere. Another bad news was that Sansdare has actually got a date now for March next year, they're closing. We're having problems at the moment, well, around the area with some U's causing problems with some shopkeepers, which is an issue at the moment, it's been happening. And also some potholes were filled in on Western Road last couple of weeks ago, which is good. Traders in Dempsey Road weren't happy with the market that happened over the weekend, kind of stemmed their business, which they weren't happy about. Good news, eighteen hours after Dart will be now in St Nair's Road next year, which should be quite good for St Nair's Road. And also, I'd like to thank all the businesses who donated to the raffle wing walk that happened over the weekend and also the public on the day, helped me raise £280 for a very good cause, so I'm very pleased with that and hopefully next year I can raise more.
Okay, thank you. Going to this side, I think Councillor Peters was first.
Just to say that the pothole campaign is still ongoing, I'm in Collinson, I've delivered over 1,200 leaflets now and I've had dozens of interactions with members of the public and I've received over ten emails as well, so that's it.
Excellent, excellent. Councillor Lee, I think you're joining up.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Just a quick one, yesterday I was meeting with the highway steward and councillor Hazard on my ward. There's been an ongoing problem with a pathway down the side of a leisure centre that's been going on for years. The bushes have overgrown so, so, so much, you can't get past the wheelchairs buggy, so it's an absolute menace. There's even bollards hidden in bushes, it's that bad. But we did have a meeting yesterday and the steward assured me that this will, this issue will be solved, we'll be getting done, we'll be dealt with.
Okay.
That's very good news.
Good news, Councillor Jack, I think you're joining up.
Two things, we had a public meeting here with Bexhill Mayor to talk through ideas for the vegetative shingle project in Normans Bay which would enhance and restore that. And after the meeting, we got a letter of okay from the Environment Agency to allow us to proceed, so we've got to put plans together, which might take some time. Second, at the end of July, I wrote to the Home Office to raise three issues with respect to the North Eye site. The first was harassment of residents by the security guard, stopping them walking where they normally walk their dogs and stopping kids playing on the car park. The second was the complete lack of maintenance of the site by these absentee landlords. And the third was the fact that they haven't updated the public information site for a year, despite the fact that in December last year, they announced that they weren't going to use it. I got a response from the Home Office on Friday, which merely responded to the, in a rather dismissive manner, to the security harassment concerns, saying that people might need to be wary of, sorry, I've forgotten the word, threats from the car park. I don't know what these particular security risks are in the car park, but they also confirmed that they are close to completing negotiations to hand over the site to Homes England and they said they're dealing with Rother District Council. Whether that's the case or not, I don't know, but when I last spoke to Rother, Labour are expecting it to be handed over to Homes England and used for homes, which is good news and means that we won't have to deal with the Home Office again.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you. Any other ward councillors, or else I should move on? Sorry, Councillor Thomas.
My thanks for prompt attention to the drain opposite the grates through Councillor Hollage attending to the emergency where the drain collapsed, there was a large hole because chaos on Tuesday when Coombe Valley was also closed. Once again, Bexhill came to complete standstill.
Okay, thank you. More hands, so I'll move on to item eight, planning matters, to receive an update on the neighbourhood plan, which the members of that committee have been working feverishly on, so I shall pass the floor to Councillor Winter, who is now the sole chair of that committee.
Thank you Chair. So the neighbourhood plan steering group, as you know, met last Tuesday, 16th of September, myself, yourself, Councillor Plim and Councillor Thomas. All the councillors, I hope, have read the recommendations. It's probably the fourth or fifth time that we've met and we can't really move forward until the recommendation, the first recommendation in the pack of recommendations is agreed by full council and actioned by our clerk. So I will read our recommendations out for those who have not read the report and for the members of the public. So, following discussions, it was agreed that a set of formal proposals be submitted to full council to ensure the lawful and effective progression of the neighbourhood plan. The neighbourhood plan steering group recommends to full council the following, that the town council, as the qualifying body, submits an application to Rother District Council for the designation of the whole parish of Bexhill-Ensey as the neighbourhood plan area pursuant to the Localism Act 2011 and the neighbourhood planning general regulations 2012. So that's the first sort of one. We need to agree as a full council, as per the recommendation, to instruct the clerk to go away and ask Rother, which will result in a six week consultation, I believe, that we wish the entirety of Bexhill-Ensey parish to be designated as the neighbourhood area, not just one little area or one park. The second recommendation is that the town council formally requests RDC to nominate a standing officer representative to attend the steering group meetings in an advisory capacity. We thought maybe when we met with the two officers a couple of months ago, that perhaps they would re-attend, but maybe we just need to firm those things up with RDC, so that's why that is in there. The third recommendation is that one further town council be appointed to the steering group, hopefully maybe, you know, someone would like to come aboard, that's quite self-explanatory, that one. Number four is that the town council authorises the town clerk to investigate the tendering and procurement process for the appointment of a suitably qualified planning consultant/contractor to provide technical support to the steering group and that the steering group budget be reviewed and adjusted accordingly. Once this consultation, this initial consultation, because there will be many, to designate the neighbourhood plan area, we will need expert professional advice on how to go forward as any neighbourhood plan steering group needs, because unfortunately the four of us are not professionals per se. Moving on to item five, is that invitations be extended to Mr Alexis Markwick and Mr David Dennis to join the steering group in an advisory capacity, in order to utilise their respective expertise in data analysis and evidence gathering. And number six, finally number six, is that the steering group's budget allocation be reviewed and increased from the current £1,000 to a level sufficient to resource the neighbourhood plan process, which joins nicely in with getting that consultant contractor, obviously we'll have to reflect that. Other than that, the report really speaks for itself, myself and Councillor Plim were co-chairs, but it was felt, I believe, moving forward, there needed to be sort of one chair, so I was appointed as the chairman and Councillor Plim as the deputy. And the next steering group meeting is on the 28th of October. Thank you Chair. So I'm looking for, that's my proposal, I'm going to propose that as the chair and I'm looking hopefully for a second.
So, probably somebody himself, one of the other three would be able to say the master chair. So as chair of full council, I think it's best to take these one at a time? Yep. You have time to think about it. So, item one, that is in effect a motion, so we propose this on block, these recommendations, so it's a vote, simple as that. All those in favour of item one being pursued? All those against? Abstentions? Carry. Item two, again, that is a motion, we've got a proposer and a seconder, all those in favour? All those against? Abstentions? So that is still carried. Item three, that's not a motion, that is a looking for, and all bar four are here tonight, so that must leave about ten other people that aren't involved that could put their name forward. The reason why, just to add a bit of perspective, bearing in mind I'm trying to be succinct, in the terms of reference it says ten members of the working group and we think that at least half should be councillors, so that's why we want to have another councillor on there. But is there any volunteer to join a very, very exciting working group that really could benefit this town and bring in extra money and protect some of the floor and fauna of our town and historic stuff? Are you offering?
Yeah.
Excellent. We have a volunteer? Do we have any other volunteers? Are you offering?
Yes. What, what the face?
I was born with it, Councillor Carroll. Looking at Councillor Winter, how would you feel about as chair of it having six councillors on?
No, I don't, I'm joking, yes, of course, that's fine. See, no issue as chair.
So, the proposer is just two nominations, anyone else putting their hand up? Otherwise I think we can just raise our hands, because it's all part of the, we've got a proposer and a second for this, albeit it's an amended. So all those in favour of accepting, Councillor Carroll and Councillor Ross on to the working group. Thank you. Any against? That's carried. Thank you for joining that group. Item four of it, professional planning support. It is without doubt looking at other neighbourhood plans outside of our professional abilities to pull all of this together. And it's probably the biggest neighbourhood board, neighbourhood plan that we've had been done under Rother, which we are the largest town. Councillor Jack.
I have a question about budget, so the only numbers I've seen was there was an East Sussex County Council consultation, which I think had 6,000 applies and cost £5,000 of staff time. So if you then add an external consultant on to that, we're building into 10, maybe more, thousand. So, how do we go about budgeting for this and at what point are the expenses incurred?
There's an awful lot of questions in that one bit. The honest answer is, we have no idea how much, until we go and find the right person, which is what this is about to investigate, we don't know how much it's going to cost. But we need to think about it quite quickly because of the preset, because this will start off next year. So this is about preparing where we need to go. I have a feeling, and it's a gut feel, that it's probably going to be maybe 10, 20, 30,000 it's going to cost. It's a massive piece of work. You've got to bring everything together that you want to protect and keep an eye on for nine different areas of one town. And if anyone's looked at them, it is a huge piece of work, but we don't know until we do it as to what the value is going to be required.
Yeah, because, sorry, I think Rother did a consultation to do with devolution and I think one of the main findings of that from a large number of responses was that people wanted an area to be like it, what it is.
Yes.
That we live where we are because we like where we are and therefore we don't want to be Eastbourne, Hastings or...
That's absolutely right and don't forget there was the, was it called the Big Sur maybe, three years ago? So a lot of information is in there and it's pulling all that together with maps and pretty pictures per nine wards with an overhaul bit and the pack will probably be 150 pages? 200 pages, somewhere around that size. Then you've got to present that to Rother, they will do it, then it comes back and someone's got to manage all of that process, because realistically, a neighbourhood plan isn't normally run by a part, it's run by a working group with qualified people within it. So we've already had the commitment and emotion that we're going to do this, we've got a working group set up that are keen to do it, we just need to think about the money that we're going to need next year. And as a ballpark figure, I suggest if you put 15,000 a year for a couple of years, that might get us over the line. At the moment, we have a thousand. So this is about, this item four is about going out and investigating who's out there, who could help us and what it's going to cost and then come back to full council. The reason why, you might be thinking, why is this a panic matter at full council? It's because the neighbourhood plan now comes straight into full council because there isn't a planning body, so that's why we're making the decisions tonight. So, all those in favour of asking our clerk to investigate the tendering procurement process for the appointment of a suit qualified etcetera, etcetera, please raise your hand. All those against? Abstentions? That's carried unanimously. Expert advisors, I want to make it very clear that the expert advisors are volunteers, so we can't insist, but it was felt from the working group, fair to say Chair, that they would be ideally welcomed. they would be ideally welcomed. There are others that we could welcome, but that is for the clerk to then go out to the community and ask who else would like to be involved. So item five, all those in favour of that recommendation? Please show. All those against? Abstentions? That's carried. We've already talked about the budget and I don't think we can do budget provision until we have the information from number four. We painted the picture that we have to prepare our thought process for preset. So those on finance and audit before it comes to full council, there'll be some money in there, hopefully it is agreed. Okay? Councillor Winter, does that cover up?
Yeah.
Sorry, inappropriate timing, but I just wanted to make sure I was covered. Okay? Item nine, excuse me, can I just talk about planning matter?
Yes.
Is that possible, please? Um, it's been brought to my attention by a resident in Sidley, uh, there's a, just for the council to know, there's a property in Camp Down Street, which is Lawrence House, and just recently there's been planned permission for an, an extra floor to go on the top. I've been given by a, a resident and a, a member of that road, a petition of seventy five, uh, of a hundred and two, seventy-five houses have gone against this. The road is unfit for more traffic, uh, there's no parking. You also have a nursery in that road, which the fire brigade have had trouble getting up that road on that corner, which I'm sure you well know. The access to Ninfill Road and Turkey Road brings you out onto dangerous streets. I'd like to make the council aware that I don't feel, as a resident of Sidley myself and other people, that this would be fit for purpose in that, in that street.
Okay, has it been on the planning list?
It has, it went on the twentieth of April, um, of September.
August.
Au- August, sorry. And, and it's, it's on there as well on this one and the, um, would you like the planning application number?
I'm just going to seek a bit of advice if I may, councillor Carroll. Yeah, I can't, I just need to check the cut-off date.
Just fine, I'm, I'm just making us all aware as, as a councillor and yourself that um, this has been brought to my attention as, as one of the councillors of Sidley.
Okay, so. We, we should also remember that the town council is only just one objection.
Oh, no.
It's a lot better if more and more residents have objected.
I, well, I think, I think if you went on a ninety-three point three percentage, I think that's quite a lot of people in that road.
Yeah.
I think if, if you're going to work on a percentage, I don't think you can get much better than that. And I'm speaking on their behalf.
Yeah. We're just checking what the cut-off date is.
Thank you.
Um, I, I do agree, putting extra residents and potential extra vehicles coming out onto Ninfill Road where there's already visibility issues up the hill.
Well, the house was actually built for um, resident, uh, old age lichten's residents and it's now been converted into a residence for everyone, so it has work vehicles, it's, it's not built for the traffic it has now.
Might just clarify the application number?
Yeah, sure, it's R. Two zero two five, one four five eight, P N three.
Can I just put forward a motion if I can find it and it's not the card that hasn't happened yet, we can object to it?
So. There is a suggestion that if, when the clerk can find it, if it's within the timing, we can put a motion tonight to object to that.
That'd be fantastic.
It's, it's not ideal because we do have a calling process, which if it was in August, it could have come to this meeting as a, but...
It's only just been brought to me and obviously there was no meeting in August.
Yeah. So we are where we are. We would need a proposal and a second up. I guess you're proposing it.
I'll propose it.
I'm surprised at you, your fellow city. So. Anybody wish to ask any questions? Councillor Plim?
Just like to make a point that this is a classic example of more housing, more infrastructure going in, but no update on the actual infrastructure to support that housing. And this is, this is a microcosm of it all, really, it's happening in Beck's Hill, all over the place. And this just brings it home to people locally that there is a development going in, there's going to be X amount of houses going up there, it's basically adding two stories to a block of houses, a block of flats that are there, but no additional infrastructure to support those people that are coming to this town to live in those houses. And so I think it's one of those things we, we have to object to on this.
I completely agree, it's going on all around Beck's Hill, there's one in London Road where they're putting potentially four extra cars with two extra properties in London Road, where there's no parking and no infrastructure. So, um, so I think it's right you brought it to.
If you're going to object to this application, you need to make a point of saying on what grounds we're objecting to. So if you could let me know what grounds, that'd be great.
Sorry, Chair, I think councillor Carroll's given the good reasons why to object to it.
Yeah, I just need to write it down.
Okay. You need to repeat that again, Carroll.
The wording. That'd be good, I might need some help with the wording.
And I encourage councillor Winter to help us, because you're very good at planning matters, aren't you? Because you have a list of what you could object to.
Yes, you need to do our material planning considerations, I have the list in front of me, so I shall read what I think is relevant and perhaps councillor Carroll may like to throw something at that. Uh, highways issues, highway safety and vehicle access is a material planning consideration. Noise or disturbance, uh, capacity of physical infrastructure or lack of. What should we have? Overshadowing slash loss of outlook, overlooking and loss of privacy, uh, layout and density of building.
I, I think it's layout and density and the first one.
Uh, what was that? Oh, highway issues?
Yeah.
Otherwise, the planning manager won't accept it.
So you're happy with those two?
I, I, I think, yeah, I think it works, for me, I think it sounds exactly.
I'm happy to support the objection, but in light of the fact that we're working on a neighbourhood plan and we may well be asked to have more housing because there are more people or not enough houses, um, we can't all object to...
It has to be done safely, though.
Yeah, yeah.
If you visit the road, come, come and visit the road.
So we kind of, in the plan, we need a positive vision for how and where we will house whichever kind of people. Actually, when I last looked at it, it was later life people who needed more houses, but instead we built great big family ones where you put a drive to Crawley to pay for...
It, it's the right property in the right area.
Yeah.
And those that know Camp Down Street, getting out onto Ninfill Road, it's just...
Yes, it's dangerous.
So we've got the two areas, we've got a proposal and a second up. Any other comments? Otherwise, it's a, a vote. All those in favour of objecting, please raise your hand. Any against?
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Winter. Okay. So we're now down to item nine, local government reorganisation, nine A is for noting.
Excuse me, Chair, I'd like to talk on item A.
Nine A?
Yeah.
It is just for noting?
I still would like to talk on it.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to ask the clerk through here, um, with regard to submitting business plans from, from us to them, are you mindful of Rother District Council's criteria for devolving assets? As in, they will look at the financial aspect and weigh up and down the financial aspect, and they've got a team of people looking at the financial aspect. What they haven't got is anyone looking at the social aspects, and that's what we should be looking at and putting forward in our business plans. And can you reassure the council that that is exactly what is happening?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else, or I'll move on to nine B. To consider potential transfer of, um, well, transfer, it's to follow the expression of interest process, which finishes on the twenty-sixth of September, for the two car parks that you had the information from.
I just, I had to update the, I did send an email about this, I had to update the agenda and I did that after the posted agendas went out, so that's why it's not on there. We had printed agendas with it, like I said, we would have, so I have to hand this out.
Can I have, yeah?
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone who has it?
Yeah. Anybody?
So nine. Can I read it first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go on.
So nine B, to consider potential transfer of car parks, and it's two car parks specifically at the moment from Rother District Council and for the approval for officers to investigate. Councillor Plim?
Yeah, I've looked at this and bearing in mind what I spoke about earlier on, that Rother District Council are looking at the financial aspects of any asset that's coming down. I cannot understand why, if they're only looking at the financial aspects, and they've given us a list of the breakdown of these car parks over the past financial year, and they've highlighted which ones are, are making money and which ones are costing money, only two of the car parks that they consider themselves to be costing money are they considering to bring down to us, and that's Lower Galley Hill and Upper Galley Hill. Not surprising, it's these...
It's three.
I've not heard the third one.
Man of Arm. That's on the expression of interest that we've already submitted.
Oh, sorry, I'm talking about this particular motion, I'm not talk, I'm not talking about previous one we've decided on, we're talking about this one.
Yeah.
And on this one, there's only two.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, both of those are in an area where there'd be no other development going on, so obviously for them, there is no interest in keeping them. If they can continue this particular process of only looking at items that are making money to be passed up to the unitary authority and items that are losing money passed down to the town council, the taxpayers of Rother that live in Beck's Hill will be financially at risk because they will be burdened with services costing them more money but no income to support them. If during this process we could look at taking on more of the car parks, we can produce a financially balanced, uh, balanced package. For example, the Deloitte Pavilion, on their accounts that they've submitted to us, made a profit of three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two pounds. That alone would pay for all the other car parks if we just took that. Now, we probably won't get that because that would be passed off to the Deloitte Pavilion because that's a big money-making venture and they need the money as well. But when you combine the other car parks, that would pay for the loss-making car parks that we can take on as well, but no one seems to be paying, putting that package and considering that as Beck's Hill. If we're going to have two car parks, we might as well have the rest of them. So, so a number of, a number of questions I've got over this, and bear, bear with me, I know you, you're, you were mindful of time and whatnot, but I have submitted some of these questions to the clerk previously ahead of this, and it felt right that I should express them here as well, so we can find out and ask the clerk to look into this. The data that was given to us, there's a couple of pages on there with Agresso on the bottom of it. I didn't know what Agresso meant, there was no key to it, so I couldn't find out what that data actually meant. It seemed to be a list of items that were sort of adjacent to the car parks or in, in, um, regarding the finances of car park. This may, the next question, and this may be just a, a financial question that accountants will probably know exactly why it's done like this, but as an ignorant person with accountants and finances, I don't know. But why are the incomes showing as a negative in red, but the costs are showing black on their accounts? That, that might be a financial aspect, I, I don't know.
It is.
Yeah. That, that, that needs to be explained in this pack of paperwork that we've sent to us, because I didn't know and I don't know if too many other councillors here would know that. Can the RFO please use the data that Rother has given us, presented on the Beck's Hill data sheet, only for the Beck's Hill car parks, showing how the Deloitte car parks should subsidise the other car parks? So we could look at that package together as well.
Can I, can I just refer you back to nine B, as outside the room, nine B?
To consider potential tran, uh, car parks.
This is the two car parks, but...
The motion, I can, I'll go through the motion that you pointed me to, to consider potential transfer of car parks from Rother District Council.
Okay.
That's what the motion said.
We're talking about two car parks.
I'm going what's on the agenda and what the motion says. I know what was supplied in the data, but this is what the motion says.
Okay. Can I be very clear, though? You have been told numerous times, councillor Plim, anything that makes money will go to the unitary. Anything that doesn't make money, we will have the opportunity to express an interest, and the expression of interest period finishes on Friday.
Yes.
That's it. You, you know that, so...
And I'd like to...
The Deloitte car park makes money, we will not be able to express an interest in that car park.
And I'd like to make very clear, that is not right, that is wrong. We, we will be left financially out of pocket if we take on all the lost services, it's service dumping. They are not looking at car parks across Beck's Hill, just Terry Beckin, those that are positive financial positions for them. We, do we sit back and roll back and go?
Oh, yeah, go ahead with it.
So we, we don't have to accept that dump. So I think I'm with councillor Plim, but for slightly different reasons. I believe when we discussed parking some while ago, there was some frustration from residents about the fact that within, let's say fifty yards of here, you've got three different parking regimes. And so splitting car parks between us and the new unitary authority would seem to be a bad idea, um, and if it make, if they lose a bit of money on it, let them keep it. Don't express an interest in it.
Councillor Say? I completely understand where you're coming from and councillor Plim, and I completely agree with you, but we have been told by Rother that we are not getting anything that makes money, so we could, we could talk about it as much as we like.
Sorry, I'm saying, don't ask things that lose money, I'm not saying ask the things that make money.
I, I agree with, I agree with both, but what I'm saying is, we have been told by Rother, so as much as we're expressing this and we are saying what we want to say here tonight, they're not going to give it to us. But maybe it's recorded, the public can see this, but I think we can ask them, but they're not going to give it to us. That's all. That's all I'd like to say.
Okay. I think councillor Crotty was next, and then I'll come up later.
Thank you, Chair. Speaking as a councillor for the residents of Beck's Hill Town Count, uh, Beck's Hill Town Centre, um, I know nothing of this, so how can I agree or even remotely agree on something that I'm not knowing anything about? Is it a committee thing? Because I've not heard any other details about this.
The only details councillor Crotty, that I've seen, or should be whatever an answer has seen, is information on just two other car parks, which is the top and bottom of Galley Hill.
But there's a, there's an issue with the top of Galley Hill, that it was actually on public land and it actually should be charged because it was given away for free to the public of Beck's Hill. So I, I honestly, you say that, you know, the stuff that we have expressed interest in with Rother, they have then quickly come back and said, no, can't have those, you know, even though the fact they offered us a Deloitte, so that's not going to make money.
They haven't, sorry, I'm going to correct you on that. We expressed an interest in somewhere around fifty odd items, and they have already gone through their due process and offered us twenty of those. They've been through the disposal panel and we have twenty items that we will be receiving at some point. The rest are in the process of going through the disposal panel that has been set up at Rother, where they consider the community aspect side of it as whereas.
They didn't offer us the town hall, though, did they? But we, we expressed an interest in the town hall, because you said, uh, because councillor Bertus...
It wasn't on the list.
I know, but we expressed an interest.
Yes, we did, but we're only, at the moment, up until the twenty-sixth of September, the expressions of interest process is live, so anyone can express an interest in the organisation. is live, so anyone can express an interest in the organisation, and then they've put a business plan forward to say they can afford to do it. It is very simple for a town council to put a business plan, because if we want to do it, we add it to our process. So, let's not get too complicated around or convoluted what's gone forward already against these two other car parks that have been, um, some extra work has been done, and Rother have seen that these two car parks actually lose money, so in effect they've added those, so it's come to this meeting to give us two days to meet the expression of interest. All the rest of all the other car parks, we have been told numerous times, if they make money, they will not be offered to us.
Excuse me Chair, excuse me, if I, if I can, on the points you've just made there, that is not consistent with their policy, because we were given all the accounts for all the car parks, which is why I and other councillors could see on here, there are a number of car parks here that lose money, that they're not offering to us, so therefore they are not consistent with their policy. So we got to challenge that. If we sat back and just accepted everything Rother told us was true, we might, why do we exist? We're here to look after the people of Beck's Hill, and the purpose of my challenge over this is to ensure the people of Beck's Hill are not financially challenged as we go forward during this devolution process.
I'm not sure what I can add to it, um, I don't have the data here for all of the other car parks.
It was sent out in the pack. What was this, it was sent out today? No, earlier on.
So.
How come I didn't get it in my thing?
This was added to the agenda after the packs were posted out, so I sent an email with the information saying that I would bring updated printed agendas to the meeting.
Can I get a hard copy of that?
Is in the email.
Can I get a hard copy of that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um. Councillor Carroll wants to.
Can we potentially split this into two, have a B A, a B one and a B two? And the B one is to deal with the information that we've got for the expression of interest, and then deal with the second part that you're now raising, councillor Plin's out to it. What's come over the side, but councillor Carroll.
Thank you Chair, I, I would like the opportunity for councillor Plin to finish, um, where he was going, because what he was saying was making sense to me, and if anyone is watching in and wants to know more information, I, I, I think he should be allowed to finish what he started with the current regulations, if he would like to. That, that's how I feel personally as a resident.
Everyone else feel that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, but we have to bear in mind that we know what the rules will be, so councillor Plin.
And I'm challenging their rules because they're not consistent, those rules are not being followed through in a consistent manner. Or if they are, please explain to us why the other loss-making car parks are not being offered to us, only two.
Is there an option? Then if you dictate which other car park loses money, when we express an interest in these two, if they are in there and are losing money, we can add those two.
I, I'm, well, I can just tell you what their own figures tell us for the last financial year.
Yeah.
And this was being submitted to all of us, so, um, Beeching Road, Sidley, the Gores', Berkdale, Gally Hill Bottom and Top, and the Pole Grove, all listed as losing money, approximately fifteen thousand five, uh, three hundred a year. The others on there, um, because the Delawar is three hundred and forty-four thousand odd, um, really sort of come up with a huge amount, Eversley Road, uh, made a profit of forty-six thousand odd, Weston Road, seven thousand, Wainwright Road, twenty-five thousand, Egerton, Egerton Park, um, five thousand six hundred, Manor Barn, forty-four thousand, Little Common, thirteen thousand, the War Memorial, um, two thousand seven hundred, and Town Hall, seventy-six pounds. So, there's a lot of money there that is being passed on to a local authority and will be passed on via the taxpayers of Beck's Hill, who will utilise those car parks, and it won't come to the town council.
Some of the car parks you've mentioned, Sidley and the Pole Grove for sure, are free car parks. So they will cost money, I'm sure they were on the original list.
I, that I couldn't tell you, couldn't tell you.
Well, so if you.
Well, could, could you tell me for definite?
No, but I know that you've quoted Sidley and Pole Grove councillor Plin as loss-making, they will because they're free.
Yeah.
And I think they were on the fir, the first list, because that is losing money, so it wouldn't go to the unitary, it would offer it to us. I'm, I'm not sure what you're leading up to, perhaps you could help me and.
I would like the clerk to investigate further the reasoning behind Rother District Council's lack of consistency as regard to car parks.
Good luck. Councillor Say.
We only have two days left to express the interest.
For an expression of interest, yes.
Well, there, there are two days that Rother District Council have put on, in place, shouldn't stop us challenging things.
Okay.
What, what are we here for?
Can I go around, because people on this side have their hands up a couple of times, councillor Goss.
Um, but, it's an expression of interest, we don't have to take it up when we get the details or whatever. Um, and the other thing is, how, do we want to look at it as a principle? We don't want anything that's losing money and not expressly interested in.
Then you end up with the free car parks going to statutory, and then you're likely to lose the free, maybe.
That's, it's possible, I'm just.
Yeah. I think councillor Lee was next, and I'll come to councillor Jack then.
I was about to, how exactly was just said, I mean, if we don't express an interest, we're not forced to take these, these car parks, are we? If we're being, if it was forced upon us, then we were going to be losing money, then that's, that's a different matter, but we're expressing an interest. We don't have to then express an interest in something that's going to lose us money.
Correct, it's choice.
So it, it is a choice that can be made here.
Yeah.
That way, it's, that, it, this, it, that might look to form, we're off the table, isn't it? If we don't express an interest in something that's going to lose us money, then we don't express an interest in it.
Okay, councillor Jack then.
My suggestion is that, um, we keep free car parks open. Um, loss-making is a bit of a misnomer really, isn't it? If they're just free car parks, surely we want to keep the free car parks open?
Free car parks cost a lot of money for insurance, maintenance.
Well, that's the choice we're, we're making, do we want to keep free car parks open?
Yeah.
If, if, if it's felt there is a social value, we can express an interest now, and when we get more details, decide whether we want to take them or not, we don't have to take them, even if they offer them.
Thanks. So, is it a wish of this council then that we change and do an expression of interest on every single car park that loses money?
I would, I would adjust that and say we'd make an interest on every single car park.
Hmm. Yeah.
Because that way we're getting the income in to subsidise the ones that are losing money.
I can guarantee you, you will.
I can guarantee you we won't get it either, because that's what Rother are doing, but it doesn't stop us expressing an interest in it.
Sorry.
It doesn't.
To, to be absolutely clear, Rother are fulfilling the government direction that they've given, so, but we can do that if, if that's the wish of this council.
I'm sorry Chair, but I'll be absolutely clear, they are fulfilling their policy. The government policy does not state that all loss-making ventures should go down to local council, it doesn't.
Ah, okay, we'll agree to disagree and move on, because I, I know, councillor.
Um, even though I'm also, um, on the side of councillor Goss who's expressing interest, because you don't have to have it after the interest is expressed, it would be nice to express an interest in it, I'm also siding with councillor Plin, and I agree that if we as a, as a body feel that there's some sort of, I don't say injustice, but there's some sort of inconsistency, then we do have the right to express it. It might not come, it might not be a positive for us, it might not actually happen, but we have to express what we feel, and I believe a hundred percent, that's, that's, that's the idea I'm reading from the room, is that we do feel that way, and I think we should express it, and we should just let people know that is how we feel, if there's nothing we can do about it, we can still talk about it.
Okay, councillor Crotty.
Thank you Chair, just wanted to apologise to the clerk, I must have missed, missed that email.
That's all right.
It was a busy week, but yeah, I must have missed that.
It's all right, it's all right.
But I didn't, it's just one page, isn't it, it's not whole page, not councillor Plin's.
Yeah, it's a wish.
Well, that lot, oh, okay, yeah, but I missed, so, but I can't.
So. Again, I'm conscious of time, we need to deal with this in the right and appropriate manner, um. What does, I, I need a motion, if your motion is to request or to submit an expression of interest for every single car park in Beck's Hill.
Yes, yes, I, I would say that, we should, as a town council, we should express an interest in the car parks within Beck's Hill.
Okay, I was saying that. Even though we've discussed this in previous meetings, and we've done our expression of interest, if, if that's what you want, we'll be overriding a motion.
Yeah, we won't, I don't think we will, we, we, the fact of the matter is that what was presented to us was there, what they wanted us to have. It was not what we actually wanted, it came back to us that we'd been stitched up.
Sorry, councillor Winter.
Yes.
Um, can you not talk between when there's a debate going on, thank you. Um, so, we did discuss what items in Beck's Hill we were submitting an expression of interest in June, I believe. So it's within six months, so to change that, can we do that?
That, excuse me Chair, but that, that discussion took place via a green list.
Yeah.
And that green list was there, what they were, what they were going to consider giving us. It wasn't, we were never given the option for, of express an interest in whatever we wanted.
Just going to say a bit of advice.
Yeah, the clear decision was based on the green list, that it wouldn't be overriding it for expression of interest. But there is obviously, I, I, I do just want to make the council aware, or I should have done in the agenda, so my apologies for that. We have only gotten to Friday, um, and I will need to check with Rother whether I can express potentially all of these interests in one form or if I need to do individual forms, and I'm incredibly low on resources this week, so I will have to put all other projects on hold. That's not a problem, I just want to make you aware that this would have to take priority over anything else, that's all.
And that's the wish of this council, that's what happened.
Well, if councillor Plin's motion fails, presumably we can have a second vote.
I'm just going to, councillor Winter, because he nicely held his hand.
Thank you, I'd like to second councillor Plin's motion and get things moving, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going, so the motion is to fulfil the expressions of interest for all the other car parks we haven't already been given permission to take.
Makes sense.
Yes, because we wouldn't express an interest in Manor Barn because we've already got that.
Well, can you say all the car parks except Manor Barn?
No.
Um, do you want to include the free ones in that motion?
Yes, I, I agree with the wording that you've just suggested there.
All right. Councillor.
So if they deny our expression of interest, would they deny collectively as a whole? I'm guessing if we express the interest collectively, they'll deny collectively, which will probably mean they would be expressed individually.
I think that's where our clerk probably needs to get kind of.
I don't necessarily think so, because the categories that we did submit our original expressions of interest for were quite vast. Um, so I think they will go item by item, but I would have to clarify that.
Okay, so we have a motion, councillor Thomas.
I've taken the motion.
Your two, eh, councillor Winter already has on the break. We're going to a vote, by the looks of it, all those in favour of that motion please show. All those against. Let's carry it. Okay. We'll move on to.
Excuse me Chair, there's one other question I would like to ask through you to the clerk. In this process, could we also find out whether there's any planning permission on any of those car parks? Because we've already found out that via the toilets, there was planning permission on sites, and so there's been a, a bit of a, um, a concern that we will be offered sites that has got planning permission on without us knowing.
Okay.
With a resolution, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need another resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a proposal, do you have a second?
Second up.
Councillor Crotty, second, I'm sorry councillor Winter, your hand didn't quite grab.
I'll share my next one.
All those in favour of the second motion to sub that? All those against? Okay, that's carried, that's two actions. Um, I would seriously make, make us all think that our resource in half is less than what it was when our previous clerk was here, and there's more, more work going in there done, but that's fine, um, Harrington Park will manage the, the work over. So moving on to Acton 10, Rother District Council liaison, for noting that has been moved to the third of October. Mainly because we couldn't do the nineteenth. Um, ten B, to approve the draft lease on Peckham, um, recreation ground, which is a appendix C. So, just to paint the picture, this has gone to our solicitors, and it's come back with no major issues as such. The two issues I see is it is a twenty-five-year lease, um, which is pretty standard, and then you are the lease, the leasing, the lease holder, you're, I don't see an issue, so I'm going to go this way first, councillor.
I have got a few, twelve, um, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm, I mean, there are things, I mean, L R two, we don't have the average in plans to know what belongs to who, that sort of thing. Um, I, I don't know what's been put together in terms of a business plan, if you like, as to our costs in doing this, or how some, some parts are being organised, um, eight point one, tenant, tenant to pay utility costs, what's connected and what are the costs? I don't know what the utilities are, um. Thirty-two, keep perimeter fencing of trees in good order, the fences are pretty poor in several places, and the trees have a number of dead branches and things, they need work. Um, do we have a condition survey, we mentioned a condition survey, but we haven't got it, that I've seen. Um, thirty-three, tenant to remove litter and waste, and then twenty-five-three, State Council, twenty bings, that's sensible because we don't have facilities for that. Um, we mentioned litter picking, I presume rangers could do that if necessary. Um, thirteen-eight, tenant to repair and maintain all service media and keep in good working order. What service media is there and what conditions is it in? Um, tenant to repair and maintain children's play area, there's a lot of equipment there, is it all tested and currently okay? Who maintains it currently, uh, is it the, their term contractor, or is it somebody outside? Um, and if we're taking for twenty-five years, we should allow for replacement of items within that period.
Yeah.
Um, sixteen-one, tenant to return the property as scheduled and conditioned at the end of lease. We haven't seen scheduled conditions to know what conditions they think it is. Um, but we should have a condition survey, a record, set a record photographs or something. Um, twenty, ten million pound public liability insurance by the tenant, they're not holding any insurance at all. Uh, it's only a matter of what does it cost, do we have standard cover of public liability, do we need another insurance for it? Um, tenant to insure any fixtures and fittings, including for damage, again, cost of that, that's an additional insurance. Um, twenty-five-three, council to provide an empty litter bin, yeah, okay, that, if that one, they stick with that one and drop the other one, that's better, it's sensible. If anything's happening, um, it doesn't mention the new play area, I mean, is this already consented?
So, there's the Land Registry.
That's not allowed.
Well, there, there's, there's the plan, which refers to the map reference which we just made it from.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, okay, that's their plan, it might indicate who owns the fences, because despite the fact we've got to maintain, they've got to be in good order. despite the fact we've got to maintain, they've got to be in good order, they're not, um, there is work to be done. I just wonder also how the ground maintenance is gonna be carried out. Will we, would RDC use their term contractor still? And we reverse RDC for that part?
So it's, it's down to us. Um, if you take it similar to how we've done Devonshire Square toilets, we did a bilateral agreement, but until we got our own contractor in. So we could do that, but we have got the agreement to take all of it. We wanted to just do the area where the new play area was going, and it expanded to take the whole of it. So that is what this lease is for, for all of it, which does, according to this, include Peppson Community Centre, um, so some of the utilities.
No, they excluded the big and the blue.
I don't, okay.
Yeah, it excludes that.
Okay.
Why, why they couldn't have just given us the square and excluded the rest of the park?
So all, all of it, all the, all need to be maintained, of which of course, we've already put the motion forward.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of costing, I mean, all I was, I was, okay, if their term contractor's including it, presumably within the 721,000 they charge us in special expenses. Um, have they given us a breakdown again that I asked for six months ago on the parks and the costs of them? And do we know how much, I mean logically, if their guys carry on doing it, um, how much it's gonna cost us?
The, the answer is probably no.
I mean, there are all questions I think need to be answered before we start the lease.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start at far end, councillor Waterman.
Thank you Chair, um. Just going off the previous conversation with item nine, I've, I've got to raise this point. Um, the rest of the lease, in my opinion, is, uh, obviously apart from the point councillor Glosses just raised, seems to be okay. But the rest of the lease, in my opinion, is fine, but I just need to say this, that buried within the document is a clause excluding sections twenty four to twenty eight of the Landlord and Tenant Act nineteen fifty four. In plain legal terms, this strips the town council of the statutory right to remain in occupation and to renew the lease when it expires in twenty fifty. What does this mean in practice? I think someone knows where I'm going with this. It means we have the land for 25 years and then that is it. When the lease expires, Rother District Council, who will not be here, so whoever it is at the time, can take the land back without paying us a penny, without offering us a renewal, and without even granting us a right to first refusal. The land could be offered on the open market and we may not even get it back. This council is being asked to commit hundreds of thousands of pounds of public money to develop community facilities on a site that in a quarter of a century can be taken away from us with nothing to show for it. It is exactly the same position Rother created with the tenants of the colony. Businesses invested, improved and built up community assets, only to see their rights stripped away at the end of their leases. The result was the eviction of local businesses and the loss of community goodwill. Some may argue that by twenty fifty, we could be the freeholder ourselves, but is that guaranteed? No, it is not. We cannot gamble on hope or on goodwill. We know from bitter experience how Rother treats goodwill locally. It counts for nothing when the lease expires. What Rother have done with the local businesses is nothing short of abysmal. And here they are now trying to replicate the same tactics against another public body.
Happy, happy for you to continue, but can you keep on track with this lease, not other tenants?
Oh, I am, yes. This town council, in effect, we are being shafted 25 years in advance. This is not how two tiers of local government should be working together. It is not partnership, it is not collaboration, and it is certainly not in the best interests of the people of Bexhill. My clear recommendation and my personal opinion is that this council must refuse to enter into any lease that excludes our statutory rights under the nineteen fifty four act, unless and until there is a binding contractual commitment to renewal or a first refusal right that protects the public investment we are being asked to make. We cannot and must not commit Bexhill taxpayers to a scheme where in twenty fifty, we hand over a publicly funded playpark to a council that does not even exist, Chair.
Thank you. Just gonna pause for a minute, I'd like to welcome councillors Drayson and councillors Bell. There is no need to.
Thank you. Um, page four, I think it's rather worrying that, um, the two addresses, excuse me, are given for Rother District Council, Vicrych Lane, Hailsham, and the Bexhill Town Council of the Town Hall Square.
I can explain.
Just sort of mention her.
So that's because the legal services are shared between Rother and Wilder. So it's, that doesn't concern me, because they would use their, the office-based address where Rother's legal services is based. Just want to make that to a point. Councillor Crotty.
Thank you Chair.
They, they share services, the same as these.
Oh yeah, no, you just see the second point that councillor May was, that Bexhill Town Council was aggressive to town hall.
Yeah.
It's correct on page two, I believe, so why is it not correct on page four?
It's not correct on page two. On page two, it's got town halls. Okay.
Um, yeah, thank you Chair. Uh, basically, one was the address, but the other thing is that this is not a complete legal document. Because there's issues where the, again, like all the other contracts we've had, where our solicitors are asking questions and they're awaiting the information. So technically, this isn't, you can't sign a blank cheque, and that is basically what this is.
It's a draft.
It's a draft, but like I said, no, it didn't say draft on here. It said on that bit, but not on the other bits. So basically, it's incomplete to sign a legal document. It's just, I, I have no how to sign that or even agree to it until I actually, actually see all the questions and all the information like councillor Glosses has asked, before I can even sign it.
Councillor, can I just add, um, I can see there are some issues, but we haven't actually heard back from our, um, solicitors yet, but they haven't actually go through this, I believe, if I can go through them. Okay. So we are still waiting for the solicitors to actually check all of this and come back to us. We just saw, it's approved, sorry.
Yeah, I assumed we would be getting an updated lease, so that's why we agenda it says approved, and then obviously when I went back and reviewed it, it's, it's not that complete. So let's not make a resolution on this. Let's just review this, and if you have any comments, please send them my way. Um, and then hopefully, hopefully by next month, we will have something more complete. Oh, yes, please, thank you.
Perhaps we could ask our solicitor, because none of us are legal, legally qualified here, the implications of the Act and it being.
And I just feel like to pick up on what councillor Winter said about the 25 year lease, that we've got no, that's 50 years lease, isn't it?
Twenty five.
Twenty five, that we've got no comeback. So we spend a lot of public funds on this, who knows what's gonna happen to it?
I, I think we have to be very.
Well, we're expecting public money.
It's a playground. Who knows what's gonna happen? And that's what a lease is about. We take the lease on, you invest in that lease for the benefit of, and we do take that risk of something happening in 25 years. I can't see into the future, but it is a playground. It is a recreational area. It's described as a recreational area. Um, I don't know whether it's protected under the rules with green spaces or anything like that, that may be another question. So, okay. Um, I'll come back to councillor Glosses.
Yeah, assuming that it was, and I can't check, uh, on the list of places we've expressed an interest in. I mean, originally, it was going to be the parks were transferred to us anyway, uh, all the process. Um, assuming it was on the list of expressions of interest, we've got, I guess, that should, that God had no objections to us taking it anyhow. Because it probably doesn't make them any money it costs them, so they would love us to take it.
We have expressed an interest in this.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's gone.
It's unlikely to go elsewhere, I assume.
The difficulty is we've expressed an interest and now we're putting suggestions of what's gonna happen in 25 years, because we've now got some paperwork. Um, we could ask for a longer lease.
Yeah, I won't be here, I won't.
Well, but we could ask for a longer lease. Just because it says 25, we could ask for 50 years. So I think.
We could ask for.
I'm, I'm very conscious of time and I really wanna move this forward, but we can't because it's only in draft. So I think that the answer is, the questions to our clerk, to raise them to our solicitors, to clarify and bring back to the next meeting. And I would particularly, I, I may threaten nineteen fifty four act to make sure.
Yeah, can I have them by next Wednesday? Can I give everyone a week to just review this again and get your questions in? Because obviously sometimes I ask the solicitor questions, then people send them after that, and I've got to go back and forth. So if I can have them all within the next week, that'd be really helpful.
Okay, can I move on from ten B with that as a suggested solution, please? Okay, thank you. Um, ten C, um, we haven't received, um, the answers to the questions that have been raised. So that's informational.
Excuse me Chair. Go on, just make a comment. Um, given the fact what we've just discussed, and then we're looking at ten, just noting ten Cs, um, delays in receiving the information we require, there is a pattern forming.
It's a different company.
But there's still a pattern forming. And this, if we, if we continue to have this, um, process delayed by draft leases that Rother have, had written up for us, that's net, net worked on Devonshire Square toilets. I do apologise, do apologise.
That's what I'm saying, it's a different.
I do apologise, yeah. But there is still a pattern forming.
There is, and it's because it's a legal document, and as we know, a lot of lease holders would refer back to this time and time again. So they want every single eye dodged and teeth crossed. I get that. We're acting on behalf of residents. So it's likely to take six months to get this. Um, the same as the questions that were asked on Devonshire Square. We've already operated that toilet. We still don't have for the lease, so. Okay. Um, ten D, to consider taking on town centre planters from Rother District Council. And they made it clear that there won't be any maintenance, so it's for us to choose whether we want to take it on. Councillor Crotty.
Thank you Chair. I remember recently when we had the, uh, people coming round, Blooming Gardens, what it's called, Gardens.
Bexhill.
Bexhill. Uh, councillor Hollage and myself was, was actually running around digging out planters up top Western Road. And bloomers were very kindly, graciously lent, uh, gave us some flowers to put in there. We're riding up to the day before they were coming round to judge. So, um, it'd be a good idea, because obviously, how many planters are there?
Oh, I have got that. Sorry, there is. There's five large planters and one small planter.
Do you know where and location? I know there's two in Western Road.
Sorry, the where doesn't really matter, it's, do we want to take this on?
Well, I'm asking a question because I need to know. That's why I've asked where.
All I've got is the town centre. I haven't got any specific locations, but the.
It does say town centre. So they'll be in your waters, probably not too. And councillor Blagrove was next, they're not gonna go.
Um, I'd just like to ask if, as we're being consider, uh, asked to consider this, if we've had any costings for them?
Um, no, they would be given to us, but obviously any associated costs would be the cost of us maintaining them, possibly relocating them. So it would only be costs that we came up with ourselves.
And renaming them as well.
I still think they ought to give us costings for that. Why won't they give them?
Uh, we've not asked for them.
Can we please ask for them?
Hang on. Councillor Carroll.
Thank you Chair. Have we looked at the possibility of getting volunteers to do this? Because Sidley works very well with people and businesses.
Yeah.
If we're gonna be, I don't know how Little Common works, but it, it does work with, um, working with the allotment groups and everything. Um, but if we're gonna be financially, um, contributing to town centre, then I'll be looking for us to be giving a donation towards Sidley and Little Common and Peppson if they decide to have planters.
Yeah, hang on, yes.
Um, I did see in the email that they sent to me, they did say if we want to take them on, they would be offered to community groups. I think Bexhill and Bloom was mentioned, so that is already a possibility if we weren't to take them on ourselves. Just that I don't even know.
So we have the option of doing nothing or letting another community group.
Um, well, I'm gonna pass it to them. Yeah, I, I share councillor Blagrove's concern of this. We would like to see the costings. I think at the end of the day, if we're gonna take on a service, an asset from the council, no matter how large or small it is, we still need to do the costing. But on the, on the, um, as a premise, um, to consider taking town plants as it, as it reads, I think, yes, we should consider doing it. Um, because at the end of the day, they're, they're, they're in part of Bexhill. And if we decide to work with the community groups for them to, um, maintain those, um, planters, then that's something the local council can do, um, rather than the new unitary authority or, or rather the outgoing district council do. So I would say, yes, we should consider taking them on, but please look at the costings.
Okay, councillor Crotty.
Uh, Blagrove first, sorry. Okay, um, meanwhile, I'll tell you a couple of things. Meanwhile, I was thinking where the planters were, was because obviously, like, in Western Road, there's one at the bottom and one at the top. And so there's also two, uh, flower shops down in there. So maybe the flower shops, like bloomers did for us by donating the flowers to put in the thing. I don't mind just putting planting in the top of Western Road, that's fine. And if the lady, the one down at the bottom of Western Road could do the same. But I was trying to think where the other ones were. I know there's one in Devonshire Road, but then there's two.
So our, our clerks are really sort of potentially relocate, so that would be for us to.
And yeah, also take, change the naming, because it says Robbish Council.
That's for us to decide. No, that's by councillor Drayson.
I, I think the one at the bottom of Western Road, I'd like, it says Biffa. Um, yeah, I suppose it's by Biffa. Um, I, I would imagine costings would be hard to come by because it's in a big thing called ID Verdi, Tang, whatever, looking after. And it doesn't matter what their costings are, but we could find out, well, our costings would be. We could ask someone to give us a quote of doing them and find out what the cost would be to us.
Yeah.
But I also think if, it should almost be the other way around. It should be offered to the other groups first and come to us if it, if it's not. But I would love to see them say in Bexhill Tank Action.
Yeah.
Uh, I think at principle, we should take them, but we'll need to check the cost.
Councillor Blagrove, did you have something else to add? Your hand was up before I go to the other side. Councillor Blagrove, your hand was up before I go to the other side.
No, I was scratching my face.
No, it was up before, because councillor Crotty tried to, councillor Jack.
I like the idea of offering them to Bexhill and Bloom.
We do already contribute to Bexhill and Bloom, so we could suggest that and then just.
But we have these different qualities, isn't it? So there is, so there is just another one as well. There's Bexhill Gardening Club as well.
Yeah.
There, there's a few gardening clubs around that we potentially would be quite happy to take these.
I do sort of tend to agree with what councillor Carroll's saying, that Sidley look after their own, Little Common and St Marks look after their hanging baskets by volunteers.
Yeah.
Is it an option for the two central ward councillors to go and get a group of people to manage them all in, and then we just buy the plants? So therefore we'll take on it, and it'd become more of a community. Councillor Byrne.
Uh, thanks Chair. Um, echoing really what councillor Plin said, we're being asked to consider and we certainly should consider. And yes, I, I think because it's part of an ID Verdi contract, and because it is likely that in the future we're gonna be talking about taking on parks and recreation grounds as Rother sort of shuffle off into the, into the distance. Uh, we will be having, no doubt, either, well, we'll be having a large contract with I, either ID Verdi or someone else who we find that, I think this is a good idea to get the Bexhill Town Council in the driving seat. And it's an operational matter as to how we go about enfranchising local volunteer groups, which I think would be excellent because it gives you a buy-in from the community. But looking forward, I think, to, to get those on, uh, to give it consideration now and to work it up into a proper operational document such as a next meeting, we can say, we're taking them and we're gonna do this, this and this with them, and then see if we all agree.
Okay, councillor Gloss.
We do have rangers who could love a few plants, yeah.
Yeah, good point. Councillor saying.
Could I put a motion for it, so we do consider taking them, but we'd also, before we do actually consider, that we look into the cost of them?
Also consider, consider.
Is that we looking to, well, our town clerk? Okay, so we don't go back to Rother to say how much, because.
I think it makes sense for.
So I, what I'll do then is I'll email Rother and I'll say, can you give me the costings for your maintenance and everything else? And I'll say, but provisionally speaking, the town council is happy to take us on. We would just like to know the costs that you paid. And then I'll bring that back to the next meeting and you can make a formal decision.
I'm not so happy to take them, to share.
Don, can I change that? If we've not asked Rother, could we just look into it ourselves of how much it would cost to plant it?
We don't have to ask Rother for us to look into it, do we?
No, so yeah, could we look into it, so don't ask Rother, we just tell them that we would be interested, but we just want to look at costing before we make a decision.
Just say we give that to them in a moment.
We'll get back to them when we get the information.
Asking Rother will take a long time, given the amount of office of time. Exactly, exactly.
That seems a lot more sensible, but it's not just the planters, the maintenance of the planters as well. So you'd have to have a contingency plan of.
Or we could go to, we could go to the, to Bexhill and Bloom, to, yeah, some of them, because they don't actually like it.
Okay, we have a motion, which is to the clerk, in best case, our costs if we were to take it on.
Sorry, Chair, can I just intervene? We, there's been no cost, because as I said, like as you said, Westing Road, they were donated to us from the flower shop. So if, maybe instead of the clerk having to do the work, I could just go around and ask where the things.
Sorry, councillor, great idea, but you're not allowed to, you're a councillor, not an officer.
Okay, well, I, I can probably guarantee that there'd be some shops that would be willing to donate flowers for those planters, because I've never seen anyone work on those planters.
I'm sure, I'm sure you're right, but there's also the cost in the maintenance and potential replacement of, because they've been there for some years and bottoms might fall out and might have to replace them. So there'll be some cost to us, but it might be minuscule. Councillor.
So as far as I understand from councillor Lewis's motion, it is to, it is to look into the cost, what it will cost us in order to maintain. Can we make that a two-part motion, which is to consider taking them on and to also look into cost? We want to consider taking them on, I feel that the room.
I don't think anyone's objected to taking them on, but we don't know the risk involved.
But we're just considering to take them on, we're not taking them on. So we say yes to considering and also work out costings and we make up by my next meeting.
Just that, you know, as with other things we've taken on that we don't know a lot about, we should know what the condition of means, I mean, if they're about to fall apart and people are going to trip over them.
Maybe.
Other things we are being offered are not in great condition.
Maybe if, if we change the motion to look at the costs and come back to the next meeting and also the condition of the planters. We've got three rangers and an operations manager, and they're all in a, in the central area. Let's just go and take a photograph. Then we can bring it back to the next meeting. Are you happy for it? Your motion will be amended. Right, we've got a motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favour of that motion, please show. Any against stentions?
Excuse me, Chair, can I not write a letter to the, to the?
No.
Okay, can I ask a question then, point of order? How come councillor Jacklin can write to the Home Office?
He hasn't.
Was that out sanctioned by the council?
I can't answer that. We'll discuss that offline.
Oh, we'll wait, okay.
So external representatives, I'm conscious we don't have a, have much time left and we've got a lot of business to go through. Does anybody wish to say something about any of the ones that they're responsible for? Councillor Byrne.
I'd like to just put on record that I've, this is three times I've gone to the Citizens Advice Bureau and asked them to give me some sort of update as to what they're doing, and it hasn't been forthcoming.
Does that suggest they don't need an external representative?
Well, they do get funding and it's not unlikely that they will come to us for funding in the future.
Have you thought about asking Citizens Advice how to get in touch with citizens?
Councillor Jacklin, did you run your hands?
Yeah, yeah, I've got an update on RAC and on yesterday's bathing water community group meeting. So at the end of August, we had a subgroup meeting, which is a new group that will meet every six weeks to consider the impact of LGR and to look at how we work together in the future. So it was the first group, the parishes seem to have different concerns to us because they feel that rural areas will be forgotten about. But the residence consultation is more that, as Sussex is a big area, people are worried that Bexhill will not be allowed, could be Bexhill, if you know what I mean, that we each want our area to remain as it is. There is a consultation that is likely to be coming up in winter, to which they may want a group response from the town council. I don't believe we've managed to do one, and so that might be a challenge, but hopefully it will come up with enough meetings notice. So and then we've got a meeting next Tuesday and on the 3rd of October. So I'll update on those. Bathing Water Community Group, I think I'm right in saying that this is something that had been asked for back in 2022 and finally it's happened with a new person working for Southern Water whose expertise is talking to people about what matters to them as opposed to being an expert in drainage and water systems. It was quite well attended. There were people from the rowing club, the sailing club, swimming club and some environmental people. And we're going to try and meet three times a year, hopefully, in person, the next one being in February. There were two officers from Rother District Council there. And what they wanted was some help communicating a couple of things which I will come to. And I believe one of the reasons why Southern Water need help with communication is because no one trusts them, and if it comes from Southern Water, no one believes it. So therefore, I think we have to approach such work with a degree of scepticism, which I'll make clear. The two things they wanted help with was one, which the, as the clerk was there, we think we can do, is to make people aware of swim folk, which is something that alerts people to this. People can check for the quality of the bathing water. The second thing which came more from Rother District Council is that there are two kinds of pollution warnings. The first, which is quite frequent, is when there's a lot of rain and therefore rainwater goes into the sea, not mixed up with sewage, but it may have, excuse me, dog poo, dog urine, dried dog urine and dead rats in it. And therefore there's more, excuse me, S H I T in the sea after it's rained. There are smaller number where there are actual sewage going into the sea and residents sometimes mix the two up. And because they're getting a lot of the rainwater warnings, they think that the sea water quality is really bad. Now, I've, I'm not settled on how good the quality of the bathing water is. There were people that attended the meeting who aren't willing to swim in the sea, others who are. No one had observed tampons or turds in the water recently. I don't know whether anyone here has observed that. But that doesn't mean that there aren't nasty bugs or whatever in the water and one of the people attending the meeting had become seriously ill as a result of being infected. Last point, they presented some statistics which showed that the water quality was good. I believe, but I haven't double-checked this, that those days when the rainwater goes into the sea are not included in those statistics. So it kind of looks all right when there's no rainwater going in. And the consensus was that it had got better. I had a slight feeling that the officers from Rother District wanted Bexhill to have a satisfactory rating because obviously having a poor bathing quality rating is not good for our public perception. And we're kind of, so this is the one with in, in with Southern Water on the reassurance mode as opposed to the making sure everything was all right. So let's see, we've asked for some stats, we've asked how many of these rainwater red warnings there are and how many of the sewage warnings. And the other thing we asked for was that when new development happens, and I think this is probably important for the neighbourhood plan, there is a theoretical allowance for drainage collection based on old understandings of how things work. And they don't seem to check whether actually it does stop the problems. And so we've asked them to do a reality check. Whether they will do or not is a different question, so.
Could I just add to that? I just, thanks very much councillor Jacklin, you made the appraisal of the meeting, it's spot on. And can I ask the clerk if she could share the data that was given to us at that meeting? That, that they called it the deck. If you could share that to the other councillors, then they'd be aware of the discussion, the follow-through a little bit more.
Councillor Drayson.
Could I subtly ask through you, Chair, the clerk to possibly write to them to arrange a visit for some councillors to the local apartment station up by? No, the. Yeah, Buller Hyde. I've been there before, very, it does open your eyes to what's going on and it would be quite useful. I don't think you could take every councillor, but perhaps the clerk could try and arrange a visit.
Just planting a picture for external representatives in the future, our standing orders says that written reports should be provided by external representatives five days in advance of all council meetings. So we should have written reports. So can those external representatives who want to discuss anything, think about adhering to the standing orders and say that we have to do a written report? Otherwise we just, great information, but then it can go away and digest it. And that's what it says, and we've allowed external representatives to nearly fill half a page of a, a full sheet.
Unfortunately, Chair, the meeting took place yesterday.
I think that, that the rider on that is unless there's been a meeting that is relevant, five days off, in that five days. I, I was nearly in the same place with neighbourhood board, but that meeting got cancelled. So I'm not going to read that neighbourhood board because of time constraints. Anybody else want to discuss anything there?
There's, there's two items under the external representatives, one for yourself. It says on here, you've been invited to join in a mayoral capacity. Does that mean all future mayors will be invited to join the rail action group?
Probably, if it's still there.
Yeah, if it's a mayoral capacity, yeah. And the one answer to that is to note that I've been invited to the Bexhill councillors' business crime meeting. The other councillors were RDC councillors, and this came about as a result of an external organisation I'm involved in, the Bexhill Trade Council, and our liaison with the police authorities. And they've asked me to attend, and I thought it was only right to let you all know that I'll be attending this meeting on 15th of October.
It's not a decision-making meeting, is it?
No, as far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, it's not. But I, I can't, I won't be speaking on behalf of Bexhill Town Council a bit now.
Councillor Crossy.
Yeah, I would like to note that, I would like to attend this Bexhill councillors' meeting, business meeting due to the fact that I've got quite a good repertoire with the local police, as councillor Gloss has noticed. When I was outside talking to councillor Gloss and the local PC, Young, turned up and was asking some questions and that.
If I could follow that, it was invitation only to this, it wasn't sort of a, it didn't come through us organising the meeting. They've organised it and invited people, so.
I think timewise, I think it's probably, if councillor Plymouth's been invited, go to that first one. See what it's like, pan out and then take it from there. So if there may be opportunity to open the mouth.
No, I might get an invite from the police anyway, so that's okay.
Okay, moving on to item 12. Three quarters of an hour left to get through all of this. Councillor Blagrove.
I could see that it says with the deadline set ahead of the annual. Yeah. Where is it?
Box says.
Oh, yeah, when the workload allows. So I just wondered if you've got a rough estimate of when it will, the workload will allow it and whether that will be before May.
Well, the deadline was ahead of May, so it will be before May. I can't estimate how long it will be before I can get on to this because obviously stuff like tonight happens where I've got to drop everything and get on with expressions of interest. So it's really hard to say. Hopefully, hopefully it won't be too long and I can get started on this. But yeah, I'm sorry it is taking so long.
Thank you.
That's all right.
As I said, we have less resource in the office now than we had three months ago. So with more stuff coming, so we give to the clerk to do, we'll delay something. So again, item 13, as the workload allows. So we move on to the motions from councillors. 14A, councillor Jacklin.
Yeah, I think we might have covered this at the last meeting, so unless anybody thinks we need to cover it, I'll drop it.
Okay, I think we did. 14B, councillor Lee.
Yes, please. Okay, as you all know, last month I had a meeting in the Colonnade for the wheelchair and scooter users around this town. I'll keep this short, I know time's pressing. And the recurring theme was drop curbs. It's, it's a large problem. I've got paper after paper after paper after paper. They're all saying the same things, drop curbs, awful pavements. There's trip hazards, someone's broken their nose, we've got people saying that's a joke. The, the, I've had to turn back, went down College Road, Carlsack, no got curb, had to turn back and cross the road, Hastings Road, Penny Lane, Blindfield, I can go on, we can go on. There are literally so many, Burkeville Road, Edgemore, Burkeville, Pankas, Windsor, and there's, there's lots of them. About fifty odd people attended that meeting, it was very well, very easy to see. And this is something that really, I think, does need addressing. Now, I know drop curbs, they're expensive, they're going to cost a thousand to two and a half thousand pounds each. And thank you to, Mr Winter was two words on advice on this, which was, good luck, I believe he said. That is not a solution. One, it's going to cause massive disruption on roads and on the pavements. Now, we've had enough disruption on roads, so a solution must be found. No one's been coming to you as a councillor, as a councillor, without a solution. Now, I've found a solution and they're called, right here, they're called rubber drop curbs. Now, I did have a video ready, but my battery's gone flat, it's lasted too long. What they basically are, they're, they're, they're curbs that fit on the side of the road, if you like to have a look. If you'd like to pass that down. They screw onto the road. Terry, could you have a look, please? If you could pass it down and then, hold on. These things, there is a video that goes with them if you want to look it up. It's a company called. That is the thing, it's similar to that one else, yeah. And what they are, you find individuals, they cost about thirty-five pounds apiece, these, these portions. They screw onto the road. One set of those will cost about a hundred and forty pounds. There is that on this, which I know you can claim back because it would be used for disability use. They're also, they screw into the road and they are legal. I've looked this up, they are completely legal, you just need permission from a local council. Now, last time I looked, we are a council. Whether we need to talk to ESCC or IDC or highways, that is something of. But these are cheap, effective and quick ways to solve this problem. And as I say, that was fifty odd people that turned up at that meeting, and that's not half, not even a quarter of the people who would have expressed an interest had I got them places. It's an important thing that needs doing. This is cheap, it's easy, it's effective, and it's something the town rangers could do. It is basically putting them in place where these are needed. And there are so many, I mean, I need a hundred. I could just go through there and pick out a hundred places where these are needed. You're not going to get drop curbs, as I said, that's three quarters of a million pounds, it's not going to happen.
I think you've sold what the drop curve is. Yeah, I don't think anyone's going to argue with it. It's whether legally we can do it.
Well, legally, they are legal.
No, whether we can do it, because they're not our roads. How does that work? So I think there's some work that needs to be done. So if you want to think about those words and put it into motion, because we can't just go and buy them. We've got to investigate, we've got to do a plan. Where am I going with lots of hands? I'll start here and go the other way. Councillor.
I agree with you, councillor, that no one can argue this. Could we maybe look into the motion and say to put a motion forward to investigate the installation of rubber curb ramps? As opposed to acquiring them, because we can't acquire them straight away without getting information on it.
Councillor Crossy.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I attended the, the surgery or the meeting that councillor Lee did. It was a very great turnout, a very interesting turnout, and a lot of people.
in wheelchairs as well as mobility scooters, as well as walking sticks have complained about the lack of the pavements and the stretch. The Fix My Street app is helping in some ways. Um, I've had a lady contact me and I passed her details on to councillor Lee, and councillor Lee has passed the details on to the councillors in that ward, which is good. Um, but I do believe that, that meeting was a very need, and Bexhill does need to be disabled friendly even with the drop curbs, because people are finding that they can't come into Bexhill because they are basically stranded out of the area because they can't move, and people do fall out, some can be so, fall out the.
Focus on the, this particular.
No, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, that's, that, that the outcome was, is that people are being, feel like they're being trapped in an area where they can't get into the town because of the fact there's no drop curbs for them to get to. That's what I was going to say, thank you.
Okay, councillor Grayson.
If they were our roads, I'd say let's buy a hundred of them now.
Yep.
They're not our roads.
Correct.
So there's no point in us buying a hundred of them, but we do need to actually point it in the right direction as well as investigating. It's actually East Sussex, have you seen these things? And perhaps you could start putting them in places around East Sussex, including Bexhill.
Yes.
Yeah. Councillor Jaclyn.
Um, I think we, we should investigate the feasibility of establishing some safe routes using these dropped curbs. So it might be that we have a couple of pilot routes, and if they work, then there will be somewhere in Little Common where it's worth putting them, and in Sidley or wherever. But the number of people who, when we did our petition, the number of people who, just to get to the end of the street was an effort, and you know.
So I think you've got something there, safe routes.
Yeah.
Because if you put them on every single drop curb, say, you could afford to, what would that do to parking vehicles? Would it reduce the width of the?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. They don't even, they go over the double, double yellow lines.
Yeah, I think you're not allowed to park.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll come, I'll come back to you because you've, councillor.
This all hinges on whether highways say yes or no, and I think that's the first thing to do.
Yeah.
Because we've got pretty much unanimous agreement that, yes, they'd be good. Uh, if we get a yes, the idea of asking councillor Lee and his team of volunteers to recommend initial routes, or maybe want to go for a lot, but let's first of all see what highways say.
Perhaps a plan through the accessibility working group.
Yeah.
Councillor Lee.
Yeah, um, following on what we were saying there, this is the thing, um, when we, we're talking about the, the safe roads. We don't need them on every single way. We don't need them on every single one. We need to make sure that at least one pavement into the town has got these. Other than people having to keep turning around or using other people's driveways back and forwards. There is also with these, these things, they come in three different sizes, two over hundred and hundred mil, hundred and fifty, hundred mil. The two hundred mil one, we're not interested in, they're too high the angles, too steep. The other two, I have checked around the town and they are the perfect size for these, because, and as for highways, I have signed, Chair, I have spoken within a holic about this. He's, he's very supportive. Um, he will be talking, I'm sure, I'll forward him the email about this. He will be talking highways. But as I say, when I looked it up, they said they are legal, just as a precaution.
So the official route is to raise a motion for our clerk to contact highways for permission for, for us to then we can investigate costs, et cetera, but we have to get highways on board. So would you like to change that into a motion that our clerk investigates?
Okay, um, well, let's put it this way as a motion, uh, can the clerk look into the possibility of or look into or contact highways?
Yeah.
For the possibility of us buying and installing these rubber curb ramps around the town. Initially in the town, and then what's he working out was to then.
Have to get the word permission to.
Permission to.
So they're responsible for the roads.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Let's just see what our clerk has come up with, I think she's got gist. With all these motions, it's important that they're read out so everyone is aware.
So we're asking for permission to potentially install.
Yes.
So, Chair. Could we take, I'd rather, I'd rather he said, oh, East Sussex fit the.
Because insurance is going.
Because of course they're going to go, yeah, you can do that, because there's no cost to us. I'd like them to be, East Sussex are responsible for the highways, I'd like them to be.
Paying for it.
Paying for it and doing it somehow.
I think insurance is going to come to.
Shed.
I think a shed thing would do, yeah, something. This is the thing, because I know where these need to go, so I think the consultation would have to come through myself or through the work group. Because I've got, like I said, I've got so many here.
So we've got to get permission first, so we should be drawing their attention to these.
Yeah.
To enable them to install it.
Can we, can we word it, that it's a, it's a workable solution and a cheaper solution to installing drop curbs? Because as I say, they cost a tenth of the price now. A drop curve is between a thousand and two and a half thousand pounds and disrupts the road and pavement. These don't.
Okay, we've got thirty-five minutes left tonight, people. We're going to clarify what this motion's going to be, please. Someone's got to put a motion forward. Volunteers?
Not necessarily a motion, but I think it's important that we, A, ask for permission. Uh, but first of all, ask them to install, but if we do it in two bits, have we got permission and will you install? As Brian says, they will, they will say, yeah, yeah, we give you permission, but we're not going to pay. So let's ask first of all upfront on the basis of councillor Lee's work, can you, can you investigate the, you know, can, the, can highways give us a reply as to whether they will fit a number of these? And will they liaise with our committee as to where they should be?
I don't know, that's, that's simple motion, because in Eastbourne, um, I believe the county, the local council paid for changing the pavements, not, not East Sussex, but I don't know. So I think the clerk can probably figure out who to talk to. So I think we merely ask, need to ask clerk to investigate the, the cost and feasibility of installing dropped curbs to establish safe routes within Bexhill.
Then we've got to get permission first.
I, I would rather.
That's part of the feasibility, so permission is part of feasibility.
Yes.
I'd, I'd rather support councillor Burns to ask them first, and if they say no, we're not going to do it, that's when we say, what can we do with it?
Yes.
So the motion is to contact highways to ask for them to install.
Yes, yes.
Through a preferred route.
Safe, so, safe through, safely, yeah.
In consultation with councillor Lee.
In consultation.
Well, consultation with the accessibility group.
The accessibility group doesn't have any powers, so.
No, so it's in consultation with the town council.
Okay, right, here's what I've got so far. Tell me if I need to add or change anything. Just want to make sure I get this right. Okay. Um, so it's an amended motion. An amended motion was accepted and it was resolved for the clerk to contact East Sussex highways and request they install rubber curb ramps in Bexhill Sea in consultation with the town council.
Yes. Yes.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Okay. We have got a proposal here. Oh. Councillor Lee's proposing that, councillor Crossy's seconding that. All those in favour, please show. Carried unanimously. There was a second bit to do with a scarifier for the town rangers.
I think I can pass on that for, for today.
Because that's an operation.
Yes.
Um, C, fourteen C, councillor Jaclyn.
Um, so the motion is to contact the chief inspector Hastings and the other police um regarding councillors not being subject to prosecution under the CPS public interest test. Um, if I can explain briefly, um, I reported two crimes in July and September twenty twenty-three. Um, we were investigated and charged, in taking the decision to charge me, Sussex Police cited the increased public interest due to me holding public interest. Um, that is not the Crown Prosecution Service public interest test, and so therefore we complained about that. Sussex Police responded reaffirming their position. Um, and so therefore in theory, we are all at risk of increased, increased risk of prosecution by virtue of being councillors. Um, we have had a review of this agreed to, and so we may get an answer. But so whether do you want to proceed with this or wait until we've had a review, I don't know.
I, I think we should probably wait for the review, um, because we have a lot going on. I'm not dismissing this, because this is really important, because any one of us could have a minor offence taken out against us and the police could say, it's a public interest because we're councillors, so we're going to advertise it. And no one else would, but we would because we're councillors. So I think if you're happy, you can park that until the review's done.
Yeah, and if I get a satisfactory answer, I will merely share the answer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, fourteen D. Councillor L.
Okay, so both of my motions are intertwined, really. I've circulated some information and some pictures uh through email and also today visually. Um, it really runs in stages of, of what I'm looking at. One, what is this thing that we're looking at? It's called a MUDR, which is a multi-use games area. So it could be used, for example, for football, for basketball, for tennis. Um, the specialty about this is, one, it's outdoors, so it gets everyone outdoors. Secondly, it's an all-weather pitch. Um, it can be caged or uncaged with floodlights, um, to keep people safe, to keep people inside, to keep the balls inside. Um, why it's needed, I've been speaking to a lot of people in the area that either run football leagues or manage teams. Um, most of the pitches, especially the grass ones in the area, pretty much always waterlogged, um, whether it's the Pole Grove or whether it's the Rec at Little Common. Um, and we don't have enough all-weather pitches. Um, to give you an example, the pitch at the college, the three G pitch at the college is, as far as I've heard and by what I've researched, is two hundred and fifty pounds for an hour and a half to rent that out with the floodlights on. And they can't get rid of it quick enough. I mean, it just keeps on being rented out because there's nowhere. You can also rent it out in portions in furs for, for younger teams to play five-a-side, seven-a-side on. So it is a real necessity. I mean, there's Rother Leagues that are under, being disbanded, I believe it's, it's one of the youth teams. Um, there's young, uh, young children that are playing at Bexhill Town, Little Common, all the other football teams in the area as well. They aren't getting game time in because of the fact that they're pictured in the waterlogged and they can't get on the muddy pitch. Um, it is, the pitches I sent you on the email are hard pitches, hard MUDR pitches, but I also looked into the softer ones. Um, it's, it's cheaper than three G and it's softer landing from hard ground as well. Um, and also to protect and preserve some green areas around the town. Now, originally, this was looked at into in Peppham. I mean, that's what I looked into it as, but I did write in my motion that it could be elsewhere in Bexhill as well. I'm led to believe also that there's such projects maybe underway. Um, also looking tonight at what we've seen in the lease, it might be a little bit difficult for Peppham. You've got seventeen point one one in the lease, which has used property, cannot use the property for any purpose other than the permitted use. And also flashing lights, so if you've got flashlights up there, that might make it a bit difficult. The real exercise I wanted to put forward today is, having a view, councillor, has got any ideas of where this might be able to go? Um, what's going on in the area now, and what do you think about this? Um, this could also be connected to the second part, you can make it two in one if you like with a recreational ground, like we've got the Pole Grove, like we've got Little Common, um, like we've got in Sidley. There's nothing really like that around the Peppham area unless you move over into Baller High. Um, to, to preserve the space and also to give the kids a chance to, to play more.
Okay, um, I'm very concerned with time, and I don't want it to be dismissed, but this councillor Winter's first.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I think I'll take them as both, D and E. I think it's brilliant idea. I, I don't know where we can go with it tonight, perhaps, but I do remember, and hopefully someone may correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if it was at a planning meeting, but councillor Plin might be able to help me. The developer who is building up Restford Road, all those thousands of houses, like Sardine did, um, they are building a, uh, play area, I believe there was a community centre, recreation ground, football, cricket pitches, rugby pitch, everything up there, or they should be. And they actually asked us, I vaguely remember, if we once, you know, if they build it, or would, would we in some way be interested in taking that over. So I believe that is part of the Peppham wall, but being incorrect on that, but I'm not sure if that is in the Peppham area. So it may be worth the town clerk perhaps, before we start going off and doing it ourselves and reinventing the wheel, perhaps just in the first instance, asking that developer, because I do agree in that sort of North Bexhill, Peppham area, there isn't really a lot for the kids as councillor Ella said compared to the town of Little Common and Sidley. Um, so if we can keep it up in that area, brilliant. So perhaps it would be worth asking that developer if they're still proceeding with that plan. If so, can, can we, can we get involved? Maybe we can, you know, I don't know, help finance it a little bit, I don't know, whatever. But I don't want us to start on a separate project and then five years down the line, we've got now two in the same area.
I'm tending to agree with you, Rowall Rock, tonight.
Oh, it's good. Great minds thinking that.
Because I instantly thought of the section one oh six officer at Rother, because there's a massive stuff on gateway. Also, that, I think would be an investigative thing. So I'm going to come, actually, I'll go that way, because councillor Plin, yours, and the second.
Yeah, um, just a point, I, I'd like to take these separately because D, um, I think we should all be agreeing with that, but I think we should all be mindful that this investigation into it will take some time. However, that time could be in our favour, because by the time the investigation's taken out, we will not be leasing that, that property, we'd probably be owning that property. And so therefore I agree with the sentiments of D, and I think we should go for that straight away and say yes. Um, with regard to E, um, there is a planning application that concerns this, um, sentiments that D, E covers. And that's planning application RR two one five one seven six O P. Uh, Worsham Farm Land, north of Westwood Road. And they do say in that planning application, which was granted, um, that a, a multi-use community building, sports pavilion, changing rooms and ancillary car park and service areas will be provided. They do provide the map where it is located as well. And what we've got to do is follow that up with the, uh, Rother District Council and say, are these plans still going ahead? And so with greatest respect, I don't think there's any need for us to pass E, but if we could just ask the clerk to follow through, um, our previous, um, discussions at planning that councillor Winter uh, uh, alluded to, and see whether those planning applications are going to be fulfilled. Because we're all very mindful of the fact that houses are built by developers, they, at the start of it, throw the sweets out to everybody, but once it comes to the end of the project, oh, we've run out of money, we can't do this, can't do that. So we've got to make sure they are not losing focus on that recreational facility they have promised Bexhill.
Does anybody want to add anything to that as a option to deal with this, because twenty-five minutes to go. Councillor Crossy.
Um, I just wanted to thank councillor L for his work on this. Um, and I agree that it, Peppham would be needed, and if this can be incorporated with the planning application.
Okay, can we, councillor Grayson, because that's.
That was all I'm going to say, thank you very much.
The original suggestion was to write to the developer. I was going to say, please make sure you write to Rother as well, but I'm now thinking perhaps you should write to Rother instead of writing to the developer.
Councillor L.
This was exactly the kind of insight I was looking for as well, and I know that councillor Plin is quite good with words. If you don't mind, councillor, would you be able to amend the motion on E?
E.
We've, because I believe that was.
Shall we, shall we go on D first?
Was that, was that twenty twenty-two?
Yeah.
That plan?
No, twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
There was an amendment on twenty fifteen.
So I think we'd need to amend that motion, but, well, I know we're going D first, but with E, to find, I know, I know we won't be able to guarantee it, but to find out what's going on.
Yeah. I don't think we can do D until we've know about the facilities on the gateway.
I was prepared to second D and let the clerk investigate in a timely manner.
And also just as an addition, I've had a look, and the companies that we looked, I, I looked into those companies initially. The companies that we thought the play park after are the actual companies that come up on Google Images when you write a MUDR playground. They're the companies that do them as well, all of those companies do MUDR, so we're already in relation with them.
Councillor Sam.
Would we not be better off waiting to see that if, yeah, if the, if the, before, because it's, it's more work, isn't it? What's up?
It's priorities what you want our clerk to do.
Sorry, Chair, but looking at D, D's dealing with in Peppham, um, and it does say, um, we can put it on the other end of the pay, pay park. So it's specifically looking at an area already.
Or elsewhere, in that sense.
Yeah, or, but specifically it's looking at that area or elsewhere, yes. But timely, we just leave it to the clerk to bring it up, but the sentiments for all of us probably is, yes, would you go ahead with that?
And I'd like to remind the councillor that we are on a ten-year, it's, it's a ten-year promise on what we've got, yeah.
Councillor Brown.
Uh, I think, I think it would be easier if we ask our clerk to ask Rother to comment on the current status of the section one O six agreement that covers this area. Then, when we get a report back, we can decide whether we want to do it, whether they're doing, is there any risk? But I, I think, I think you'll get an honest appraisal from planning as to whether the one O six is at risk or not. Because as councillor Plin says, it's not unknown for people to say, ah, well, yeah, we, we can't do the development. Everything's gone up unless you cancel the one O six. So let's, let's get a, uh, let's get a statement on the status of the one O six.
I do, sorry, I do apologise, but I do have a second on that, I believe, if that is possible to.
Can I suggest we take out everything after Peppham full stop? So you just investigate, cage, mark, spell.
To see how much it would cost in Peppham only, yeah.
So an amendment specifying that there isn't necessarily a deadline for the officers to meet would be very helpful. Um, just because it, it allows us to get through our workload and prioritise other things in the meantime. So if, 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 if it's possible for me to just add in the resolution, basically saying this is the top, top of the list, that would be great.
I would be happy with that, but, um, yeah, that's absolutely fine. Just a reminder again that we have got relations with the people that do this just to get price. But I'm very happy with that, yeah.
Okay, so the motion would be to pose that the clerk investigates, caged or uncaged, outdoor, mud.
Yep, outdoor mud.
We already have two in the town.
The country.
Have you got a second for that?
Would that, um, thank you, by the way, would I also be able to ask, would that be, if it was to be done, how would that work financially if you needed to rent it out? Would that then be passed on or would that be an asset of Bexhill Town Council? If it was to happen? I just want to know the, the legality of it.
A lot of questions. Um, depends who owns it, whether we pay for it, whether we let it out, whether we give it to a management company to run it for us, lots of options. So that will be down to the feasibility study that could be done. Councillor Grayson.
Chair, just going to say, you, you said we've already got two in Bexhill, but if you finish that sentence with in Peppham, full stop.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Yeah, okay. Are you all right with that one?
Okay, just, sorry, just to clarify. So we're resolving that I'm going to investigate this in Peppham when workload allows.
Yes, yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
We've got a proposer, we've got a second. All those in favour of that when workload allows. And against, extensions, extension, that's carried. Fourteen E.
So.
I think that is a.
Would you back to the one O six?
Would you be able to amend that motion how you see fit?
And what I will suggest is, would the clerk investigate planning application R R two O two two stroke two four seven seven stroke P with regards to the one O C, the one O six, one O three, um, section?
Yeah.
Section one O six.
Yeah.
One O six.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That'll do it. Because it should be quick and it shouldn't give, shouldn't give Joey too much work on that one.
Yes, I have, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It might have to relate to two one five one seven six O P as well.
Um, it may do, but they do, they do refer, that one does refer to that one.
There will be lots. Oh, we, we've got a proposer for that, a second, um, councillor Humbley, you said, and that one. All those in favour of that as an action? All those against, standing. Okay. Item fifteen, apologies, my voice is becoming croaky, um, uh, but there is no correspondence. Sixteen, um, questions and answers. Um, sixteen B, to receive questions from councillors. This is questions for our clerk, not for anyone else. So from our councillors, um, and of course you know you can email in to our clerk with questions subsequently. Any future gender items, this is a time to suggest mail. No hands arising. Um, sixteen C, to consider any new risks? Anyone considered any new risks? It should be on our risk register.
Can I just, sorry, um, what do you say new risks? Is that, is that for the council? Is that for places and awards and stuff?
Um, it's, it's risk to Bexhill Town Council.
Oh, okay.
Perhaps have a look at our risk register that, um, it can't find it back off.
It'll give you a flounder.
Councillor Vagro.
Um, I'd just like to ask before we close this meeting to the public if we can kindly look at what's in that bag, which is the, um, the surplei.
I'm afraid we can't, not, not in an open meeting. I can, I can use the same orders to close the meeting, but we've got some important business and we've got fifteen minutes left tonight. So if you wanted to do that, you could do a motion for the next full council and bring that along yourself. But we can't do it now. We don't have time, I'm afraid. Any other agenda items, risk register? Otherwise, dates of the next meeting is the twenty ninth of October. Um, I now declare this meeting closed. Thank you.